All right, it's seven, is it seven, yeah, seven o'clock. And welcome to the October 25th, 2022 School Committee Meeting. I am the Chair Elizabeth Spiny and I call a meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with, as we always do, with public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any public comments tonight? Anyone who's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. And we move on to general business. And our first order of business, we have a present or a talk by Grafton High School student, Cooper Barabee, who is going to talk about some of the efforts that he's made to bring awareness to mental health. So, welcome Cooper.
Okay, we're going right into it, I guess. Okay, well, for all of you who do not know me, my name is Cooper Barabee. I'm a senior at Grafton High School. I am also a team football captain. And a couple of other things about me, I'm starting to learn the piano recently, which is actually pretty fun. But other than that, I'm a high honor roll student. I'm also the MIAA ambassador for our school. And today, I'm really excited to talk about a story of mine that I think is really important. I think it's very under-talked about, it's not talked about enough, especially for student athletes in Grafton High and just in schools in general. I want to first, I'll have other thank yous at the end, but I want to thank Kevin Carney and James Cummings for, Dr. Cummings, sorry, for inviting me to come and speak here. They are great guys, so I'm really excited to come and talk. But as you said beforehand, my talk's going to be about my own story with mental health, depression, that, all that jazz. So I guess I'll just go and start. So I'll start this off going into the summer after my junior year. And I was very excited, to say the least. Our team, football team, did really well, went 11-1. Did really well in school that year. Basketball team as well, track. I was super excited to have my senior year. And college stuff as well, even though, especially everyone who's a senior right now, it's probably not the most fun time, but it's definitely exciting, to say the least. And so I was very excited going into my senior year. And I was, you know, really happy to get it going, doing, getting stuff done, you know? And just to state it simply, life got hard for a while. A lot of stuff with my family, friends, social stuff. I got very bogged down by schooling. And these things aren't necessarily deal breakers in of itself, but I like to say that a lot of stuff snowballed all at once. And to me personally, and especially for a lot of people like me, where you, we've usually been pretty good with dealing with all this stuff. But, you know, just this one time it got, you know, it got, it just got too much for one time. And I started to do things that I regret. And it really took me a long time to get out of it, you know? So I struggled with a lot of sadness about the past, a lot of sadness about social stuff, family stuff. I also began, I kept it to myself, I would say. Being a student athlete, especially for a sport like football, I'm not calling out any football players. But, you know, football's a very hush-hush kind of sport. And I feel like that was very embedded into me as like, oh, I don't, you know, I should deal with this by myself. And I should keep it to myself and more internalize it. And that was very unhealthy for me personally. After a while, my parents started to pick up on it. And so did my friends. And after some events happened, my parents decided to finally step in and say something to me. And that's when I really noticed that I really needed the help, I really needed some help other, outside of family and friends. I don't want to make this talk just a pity. That's why I keep the actual struggle, a very short part of it. I more want to elaborate on my afterthoughts and what I did to improve and what I'm doing now to support mental health awareness. So very first thing that happened is my parents, and I want to say thank you to them also. They've been great with this whole thing. I began to see a therapist, which I think was very important for me, especially guys. Not calling out guys again, but very, you know, it's very, I'd say there's still a little bit of a stigma around seeing a therapist, especially for guys, it's seen as weakness. And I honestly couldn't disagree with that more. I feel like I've became, become much a strong, much, such a much stronger person. I'm more embedded in my own beliefs now that I've seen a therapist. I couldn't recommend it enough, especially for people going through stuff that I went through. I also began to open up to more of my friends beforehand. Our, my friendships were more, I wouldn't say shallow, but we didn't go into those harder topics a lot of times. It was just a more joking kind of manner. And I began to open up with some of my friends, I began to see new friends that supported me. And that also helped out a lot, seeing new people, getting to know people on a deeper level. I think that helped me out a lot as well. A big thing for me was I began reading, I actually originally found out about this philosopher or a spirit self-help guide from an album that I had recently listened to by Kendrick Lamar. It dropped sometime this summer. And I, on the album, there are snippets from this spiritual teacher called Eckhart Tolle. And I became really interested in that. And I decided to listen to some of his talks and buy his books. And he teaches very much presence in the moment. And I think that's something that very, that I needed to hear a lot. As I said beforehand, I had a lot of sadness about the past, a lot of anxiety about the future. And that's something that Eckhart really speaks to. And I would like to say to all of you to at least, you know, listen to something he has to say. I think he is very, he says, you know, very useful for a lot of people in a lot of their lives. And that helped me out a lot. Sort of not forgetting about the past or forgetting about the future, but more realizing that you overthink it a lot of the time. And that anxiety about the future will come in the future. And that sadness about the past, it doesn't pass, you got to live in the moment now. Since then, since sort of my, since I helped myself and other people helped me to get out of that, I've been, it's been a great time dealing with, or I would say supporting mental health awareness around the community and in Grafton. Very first thing, I reached out to my athletic director, Mr. Kevin Anderson. And he got me in touch with a sports writer who thought that my story was one that was very useful for a lot of people my age. So I got an article written in the Telegram and Gazette, which is a local, well, not local, it's a more county-level newspaper. And I think that opened a lot of conversations with a lot of my friends, a lot of people that I didn't know. Even like some freshmen, you know, on the football team, that kind of stuff. Driving them home, talking about stuff that they need to talk about. I think it definitely opened up a lot of conversations originally. I also was featured in a Grafton News article that also linked to the Telegram and Gazette article, more talking about my mental health awareness campaign. I attended the Michael Cherry Walk, which was set on, if you guys don't know, Michael Cherry lost his life to depression and anxiety a few years back. And since then, they've been annually have, being held a walk. I attended that with some of my friends, supported what the, what the people at the Michael Cherry Walk are doing. I think it's a very great thing for the community. I think I'm really excited to hopefully attend next year, if I have the time. And finally, with the help of Mr. Anderson, and he helped me out through a lot of this, me and him raised $800 at one of our high school football games. So I was, you know, able to play on the field while supporting a cause that really meant something to me personally. And I'm glad that me and Mr. Anderson were able to do that together. Also, I was reached, I got reached out, or someone, Mr. Mitchell in the middle school reached out to me to talk to some of his wellness classes as well. And I'm also excited to say that I'm talking at, hopefully talking at a future MIAA embatt, or MIAA headquarters professional development meeting, talking in this sort of manner about my own story. And I'm just super excited for what the future holds with what's going on with this. I'm super excited to support a cause that I love. I'd like to end this just by saying, you know, with Eckhart Tolle, with living in the moment, living in the present. You know, even sitting down here now, like looking at everyone around here. You know, I'm living in the present right now, just not thinking of anything that's happened in the future, not thinking of anything that's happened, happening in the past. And hey, you know, the present seems like a pretty damn good place to be. So, thank you. I'd like to, if you guys have any questions, I mean, if you, if you have, any of you guys have questions up here, I'm totally free to answer, but if not.
Open the floor for that, but first, I just want to say rarely do presenters get an applause. You know, you should feel good about much, this is so much of what you're doing, but take home the applause.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Comments, questions? Graciela?
So, I'm sure you're not aware, and I am a school psychologist as a profession.
Yes.
So this, to me, is like the best thing that could have ever happened to me. And I've had a pretty rough day. So, not to make this about me at all, but congratulations. You've done amazing work. And I am extremely happy for you that you were able to get to this place and talk to us because we just need more students like you and more boys and girls and any, any other type of gender that are able to talk about the mental health crisis in, in the state or in the country, in the world, that can get that word out there and we can do anything that we can to help out others.
Yeah, I would like to say that going through all this, and originally when I found out about the Michael Cherry Walk, that was through school counseling with Mrs. Sham Buckley. So she was also super supportive through, you know, I didn't use the school counseling system that much my first, I would say, two and a half years of high school. But ever since college stuff's picked up and obviously with this now, I said I've been using it a lot. It's a really great resource, honestly, with all that, school psychology, counseling, it's been great.
And like you said, therapy helped you a ton. I'm a strong believer that everyone should be getting therapy. Adults, children, anything, so I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, when I was, when I was, when I had to talk with Mr. Mitchell, he said that, he, he had an example that in Buenos Aires, in Argentina, it's considered weird to not have a therapist. So, hey, maybe that could be something that we try to implement, but, you know, yeah, it's great. I think a lot of people, it could benefit a lot of people, even if they're not necessarily in a terrible place. I think it's just great to always talk to someone that's kind of more neutral and doesn't have their own opinion. So, yeah, thank you so much. Anything else?
I did, yeah. I just wanted to thank you so much, Cooper, for all that you've done. I've watched you on the field and I can tell what a leader you are to your teammates and to the community.
Yeah, I'm a little hard to miss out there, I'm screaming and stuff, so.
I appreciate it. But just what you said, I mean, there is unfortunately a stigma. I always say, you know, if you have a stomach ache or you have a headache, you go to, you know, your physical doctor. If you are feeling, you can go to another doctor. And I, I love that you're out speaking and somebody that is a leader, kind of making it cool or whatever it is, and speaking up and speaking out because that's the most important thing. And I'm just, I'm really glad you're here and that you are getting the help and got the help and sharing it. And it's great to hear a story and it's great to meet you. And thanks for being a great representative of Grafton. And I'm going to use this as a pitch because beforehand, we were with, speaking with some students and they mentioned that a lot of people don't know that we do have a school psychiatrist, psychologist in-house as well, that people can reach out to and that it hasn't been, a lot of people think maybe she's hidden. So if, if you're watching or if your, your parents are watching, you can pass it on that we have that resource within the schools. Because we know how hard it is to get the help we need outside because there's a, there's a crisis and not enough people like Graciela doing the, the good work. So, thank you, Cooper. I just, I'm really glad you're here, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
What did you raise the $800 for? What did that money go to?
Me and Mr. Anderson donated it to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention.
Oh.
So that was what we donated, that was about 800, I think 860, 880, something like that. All raised just through charity, just through the admissions to the game. That's where we, that's where all that went. Anything else before you, there you go?
Laura sort of alluded to this, Ms. Often. Do you feel like our students in our schools know about the resources we have? Is there anything we can be doing to expand that or expand awareness? Before you needed the resource, did you know it was there?
I did not know about the school, well, obviously I've known recently. But I did not know about the school psychologist beforehand. I think, I do remember hearing about it, but I do believe that I didn't look into it. I mean, again, at that time, I was more trying to deal with it myself, so I don't think I would have reached out about that. But I, if I remember correctly, I don't remember like how to, how I would reach out or how I would do that. So I feel like something could probably be done to make it more, not, I mean, obviously it probably is available. It's just probably not known enough. I, I, excuse me, but I don't know where the office for that would be. Is it in the counseling department?
I don't work for Grafton, I work for a different district, but usually they're connected to some type of counseling.
I know that, I know that the counseling, the, Mrs. Buckley does say that she does help with that stuff a little bit, so. But yeah, I, I, as a student, I didn't know where I could find those resources. I know that they were probably there, but I don't think they were known as much.
So there's a PR problem with her services, maybe we can do more. But you're addressing that by being out here and being a leader in our community and talking about it. So you're helping to do good PR for the resources we have and.
I think like with what Ms. Often said, being that like captain and hopefully being a captain for like the basketball and track teams in the future, that having, being me having this platform and talking about it and kind of making it less stigmatized, I think that that helps out a lot. Just even if it's outside of school, seeing who you, like seeing someone, like that's what I'm trying to do with my platform. I think, you know, being, like, you can be a great captain on the field, but I think what a truly good captain is, is being able to talk to you off the field and being able to be a, just a person that you can always come to whenever you need it. I think that's what a real captain should be like.
Thank you for taking that on, it's amazing.
Thank you. Did you have something to add about the?
Can I just interrupt? So the school adjustment counselor and the school psychologist are both located in the guidance office. And so I think sometimes people assume that they're all guidance counselors. But that's a great, I guess, message for us to get out there for the high school students too, to, that that's where they would go is the counseling department.
I just want to thank you again. I love what you're doing, I think it's so important. I've been in counseling myself and I don't say that very often, but you actually are making me brave enough to say this in a public forum. And it brought a lot of good to me, it helped me out a lot. And I thank you for being a leader on the field and off the field and making it, you know, reducing the stigma and making it something that people can comfortably talk about. And going to, you said you went to the middle school too?
Yeah.
I think that's so important. I mean, that's such a critical age, it's such a critical time. And these thoughts are going around in these kids' heads and they don't know what to make of it. And to have someone like you go there and share your experience with them, that, I'm sure that's going to make a huge difference in their lives. And people, the kids there who are going to hear that, hopefully they'll be able to, to reach out themselves and get help if they need it, talk to someone if they need it. Talk to a trusted adult, talk to a counselor, talk to a psychologist, what, you know, get to their parents and find that help. And, and, you know, so many people need something like that and I did. And so I just, thank you.
I'd like to thank all you guys too for, you know, letting me say my story, letting me take up some time in your meeting. But, yeah, I'd like to thank you guys. And just one final thing, I'd like to thank my parents, they're probably watching right now, taking a ton of pictures or something like that, so.
I already texted your brother a picture.
Oh, that's great, yeah. So, yeah, my parents, my brother Ben, all my friends, especially, I'd like to just give a special thank you to Luke Heron, Nick St. George, and Wilson Fedig. There's some great guys, so they've helped me out through a lot of this, them. And obviously, Mrs. Buckley, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Carney, Dr. Cummings, I got it right that time. And any other, you know, teachers, counselors that I've talked to about any of my endeavors. So I'd like to thank you guys and I will take my leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to wish you all the best and I hope you can enjoy your senior year. I know it's, it's, it's the best year. And I, I hope that with this kind of firmly in grasp now, you're able to move forward and in addition to serving our community so well, make the most of this last year at Grafton High. Thank you so much.
Go Gators.
Go Gators!
Go Gators! Thank you, Cooper.
Thank you so much, guys.
All right, next we have an ELL presentation.
That's what I love about my job, right? Like I can remember Cooper being in kindergarten and now I'm looking at him, he's like a leader. Like this is such a rewarding part of the job, so that was excellent. So I'm excited to be back to present to you about the Grafton Public School ELL programming. I do have to just start off by saying I am a very small, small, small part of this department, but I am honored to be here representing the people in the department who do all the real hard work. So here is, here is our staff. As you can see, we're a small but very mighty department. Kristen serves as our go-to for state reporting, all the backend work. And then any law, like she is our go-to person. And then we have April Walling, who's been in the department for a while now. She is going between three schools this year. Flexibility is definitely the, the motto of our department. She's at South Grafton, North Grafton, and then our middle school group. We have Jess Belton, new about a year now with us. She's over at North Street. We have Julia McNiff at Millbury Street, she's new this year as well. And then we have Nancy Miranda, who's also servicing students at the middle school and the high school. And she has some, some exciting things to share with you with some students tonight as well. So again, as I mentioned, I'm just a very, very small part of this department. They are the people doing the real work. I have learned so much about this population and I think this graphic is very interesting. For me, what stands out is that most EL students were born in the US and are citizens. That is something that I find very, very interesting. And then 10% of our public school students are K through 12 are classified as English learners. So that's always very interesting as well on this fact. Even though we don't, we're not as big as, as you can imagine Worcester or Marlborough would be. We have 81 students in our EL programming. And again, I mentioned that flexibility, at any given moment, we could have two families move in and they could be, all be newcomers and all of our numbers double. So right now, at this very moment, we have four newcomers. Those are brand-new to English in our schools. And as I said, at any given time, they, we could have a whole family move in and that number doubles and becomes eight and then quickly becomes 12 and 16. And, and our staff, the people behind me, spend the first couple of weeks with our newcomers, getting them used to school. There's so many things, as you can imagine, just not knowing the language, how much and how brave those students are and how much they have to overcome. And they just blend right into the community and they start learning, they start making friends. And it's with the help of our EL teachers. We have 19 home languages, but that does not mean that it's only 19 languages. Those are just the home languages. We have many more languages that our students speak. I'm always so impressed as someone who only speaks English, that we have fourth graders who know three, four, or five languages. That's kind of impressive, you know? It's really great for them and it's something that we learn from as well. So that's our demographics right now here in Grafton. And the whole purpose of our English language learning education is provide that students with language skills so that they can participate back in the classroom. They can make friends, they can safely maneuver around school, they can order lunch. And it's also, we're focusing on the academic language as well. We want them to reach a highest levels of language proficiency and then no longer need that academic support. DESI will say about six years is what it takes for a typical student who comes to the country as a newcomer. We work on four areas, listening, reading, speaking, and writing in the area in English. For the focus of our instruction, there are a lot of guidelines set by the state of Massachusetts and the federal government. We use the WIDA standards framework that was just updated in 2020. And our teachers have done some really great work trying to incorporate those standards. We actually just had a review through DESI that has really given us a chance to reflect on what we're doing and incorporate in those standards. And we also have what's called the WIDA can-dos. So at every language proficiency and grade, we can see what students at each level are expected to do and then what they need to do to get to the next level and continue to grow. We in Grafton offer a sheltered English immersion program. We're not a dual language, we shelter and we immerse them in English. But we have some flexibility with the way that we deliver the programming. Depending on the student's needs, we offer our services in groups. But again, if we have a third grader who's brand-new, that student's going to be alone. We have, we have a lot of flexibility with making sure that we can meet the student's needs. We will pull out when appropriate. We will also push in, we have some great work happening with students who struggle just in writing. And I think Jess is going into that class, she's helping them with that writing assignment so that they don't have to be pulled out for that. They can be part of their school community and get what they need as well. And then we'll also offer some consult time. As you can imagine, classroom teachers have a lot on their plates. So we like to try to support them as much as we can outside of the 45 or 90 minutes a day that we're providing services. We also have students who qualify for English learning and special ed programming. So we do not want to just say, well, they're English learners. We still want to identify for dyslexia, we still want to identify for any learning difficulties that they might have and get support that they need as well. So we do have students in both programming. And our services will look, again, very similar. We'll either pull out, we'll push in, or we'll consult with that special ed teacher depending on the level of service, special ed service that those students have. We do continue to do WIDA access testing, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But if a student qualifies for special ed programming, we still annually test them for the WIDA English standards as well, so that we make sure that we're providing everything that that student needs. We also have parent communication at the beginning of the year. The state mandates this, is a parent letter that we send out. Depending on what a parent, what a family might need, they may need this translated. So we send that home translated, we provide them with the screening results for their initial placement into the program. And then the WIDA scores from the previous year, that usually happens like in January to March, but we don't get those scores until late May, June sometimes. So we send those home at the beginning of the year, so the students, so the parents have that. And then a parent has a right to opt out of this program. We don't, we pull, but if you as a parent do not want this service, we, as long as we have a form that you fill out and they can opt out of this as well, if they'd like to. And then parent communication throughout the year. Our EL teachers provide progress reports at report card time on just the language standards that they're working on. They'll also get a classroom report and if they're in special ed programming, they'll get that report as well. School notices are translated if that's needed for the families. And then we have interpreters as needed. We provide those for conferences coming up in November. If a family needs that, we make sure that we provide them with the support that they need so that they can participate as well. And then the WIDA access testing, this is very much like MCAS, but this is for our students in EL programming. They test in four domains, the speaking, reading, writing, and listening. The timeline is January and February, it's about a 30-day window. They set the time, they, meaning the Department of Massachusetts, sets that time for us. And then how it's given, kindergarteners, they receive paper testing. Everyone else, it's online. So they're really making a move similar to MCAS for that. It's standard-based, criterion-referenced. In Massachusetts, making progress means that a student is on track to attain English within that six-year window. And then we have testing, you can test out of ELL services, meaning you need to receive a 4.2 overall score and a literacy score of 3.9. And that's set by the state. And then after they test out, the students test out of the program, we then have to progress monitor for four years so that maybe they just, just, just made that score and then we set them free to the classroom. We want to keep eyes on them just to make sure that, yep, we are still getting what you need. And if not, we can, we always can pull them back into programming to support them. And then this is what a WIDA report would look like that the parents receive, just so you can see. They give a range, proficiency level. And again, this will be in the home language that parents request. We'll send this home in the language that they need it in so that they can participate as well. And I'm going to hand it over to Nancy Miranda and she brought some students with her. And she's going to talk a little bit about her programming as well. I'm not going to go anywhere though, if you have questions.
Thank you. Welcome Nancy.
Thank you.
And friends.
Spending a lot of time with these two. Okay. Thank you for inviting us and asking us to spend a little time explaining what we, we actually do at the high school in the EL program. I'd like to first introduce though, these two young women on either side of me. This is Becky Ogello. Becky is from Kenya, she's a junior. And this is Sara Elashwa from, I say it differently every time. And Sara is also a junior. And you're looking at two exceptional students. And just exceptional people, these two. They've just both been asked to join the National Honor Society, making that public now, okay? And well, well-deserved. They are leaders in our classroom, constant help for me and what we do. So I think what I should maybe explain to you is that how our program is set up in the high school, it's a little different in the sense that, uh, however the student enters Grafton schools, at whatever level their English proficiency falls into, we have to move them towards graduation. That is, I feel that is our goal for our students. And we need to do that in such a way that they can get it done in a timely manner. So the students are, yeah, with me. They come into my classroom and we work through all the different levels and we, oftentimes, we work all the different levels together. You know, we've got lots of things going on and history is one of the things that we do there because that's a requirement to graduate. So this evening, I thought we'd take a look, maybe it's better for you to understand what we do if I give you an example of what we're doing now. So in US History Two, part of the program, that's the standards in the state, require you to look at civil rights and liberties protected here in the United States by our constitution. Students who are in our EL classroom have a wide variety of backgrounds, background knowledge they come with, all kinds of experiences, and then some don't have the language to really access what they're doing in the other history classrooms. So typically, we'll find some starting ground where we can begin our studies together. So this, what we did, brought here is, if I can get this to work, we just, oh, thank you. All right, uh, we'll go to the next slide. Thank you. Okay, so we, there's some history here, I guess, right away. We think that the water insecurities might be a sort of a new thing. Um, I guess not. Forever, people have tried to survive, uh, figuring out where they're going to come up with the water they need. And Benjamin Franklin, I said, I think, said it well there. We certainly figure out how important water is when we don't have it. So I thought it would be fun though. We can have a little fun here tonight. Uh, take a look at who our students are. Oops, that didn't work. Okay. That's why it's serious here. Thank you. Okay. There we go. Oh, no. I gotta put my glasses on. Right on television, okay. So just a, a quick look in, uh, of how we go about it. We have these, again, we've got a lot of work to get done and a lot of different students, a lot of different moving parts, right? So there's some basic EL best practices that we, we really try to use, um, quite often. I can go right to the third one there. And this puts us in line with the district's initiatives for this year in terms of using the multimodal learning preferences. This is something that EL teachers have been doing for a long time and making sure that as we present the materials in both learning language and also in content, we use several different ways to do that. So that that student who learns best by visual has that opportunity to do that, auditory, also kinesthetic, so we can, we can get all that done. But there, there are things we practice. And it, I, I think it works. Not every day. Okay, so history, we get back to the idea of how are we going to ins- get the story across and the understanding about civil rights and liberties. I think we had to go back and understood that across the board, the students all understood what rights are and what human rights are. So we, we took a look at this, made sure everybody understood what we were talking about. And then we took a look at this and the fact that, uh, on a global sense, uh, the United Nations decided in twenty-ten that they would recognize the human rights for everyone to have access to clean water and sanitation. So that's where we started, back in that idea. And the, and then what we'll do is begin to work through human rights, bringing it into other rights, like the civil rights. Just so you have an idea of how we go about it. In any given unit of study, we will offer lots of different ways to access understanding. Some of these things we haven't done yet, but this is what is planned out for this unit of, of work. You'll notice in there's a lot of different thing, ways of doing it. And of course, that back, that, in the background there is the language acquisition. There's a lot of language in those activities that are being repeated so that the, the students can really have those words, right? They, they own them after a while. So I, I asked Sara and Becky to take a look at the list of things we're doing and the things we're going to be doing and explain to you which ones they think hold value for them and why. You want to start?
First of all, I just want to say thank you for your time and I apologize if I stutter a lot. The main two, I think, ideas that really stand out of like what we do is researching, like, online is really helps us. And as of right now, we're looking at water insecurities in other countries, not only our countries. And researching, like, as of right now, um, like, I'm looking at Ethiopia and the water crisis in there and how it doesn't only affect its people, but also other countries. And it affects like my country, Egypt, and my dad is also like affected by it and my other family. So really like researching is, gives you like a lot of information. And it adds to our like main points and ideas. Um, another thing is reading children's books. I know it sounds kind of silly, like reading children's books, but it's really like, it gives you a lot of information. It makes us like think out of, like outside of the box. And, um, it delivers a lot of information to us, especially to like, like beginners, like on how to read and stuff like that. Is, um, it's like small sentences, but it really gives you the idea of what we're talking about. And we're also doing like graffiti tables. We don't write words. We only draw after reading the children's books. And we don't read the children's books like, like we just open it and read it. We take a look at the pages and we just read it like silently, like just take a look at the backgrounds and the pages. And then when we finish, like as a group, we read it together and then we discuss it. And then we draw on the graffiti tables. And I think Ms. Miranda lets us do that because she wants to, um, like show us there are so many ways to express how you're learning, not only by writing words or talking, but also by drawing. So I think those are really important concepts that we learn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky?
Thank you so much. Um, so for me, I think I like all the, um, all the examples and the methods of how we learn. But, um, my favorite, one of my favorites is, um, reading Raskids. And the first time I saw the app, I was like, it says Raskids. I'm not a kid. And, uh, but then when I got in there, I found that, um, they use like easy vocabulary that I can't understand. And they have pictures and I like looking at pictures when I read. And then it's there. It's there every day. I still have books that I read when I was a freshman and I can always go, um, back in there and read them again. And, uh, once you finish reading, you have, um, questions after every book and, uh, you can do them as, as much, as many times as you can and, uh, they'll give you the answers. Um, and also you can listen to the books. You can read them and also you can listen to them. And, uh, yeah, it's really fun. Raskids is fun. And I also like, um, watching videos because I like watching movies. I like watching, so. I enjoy watching videos and I learn a lot when watching videos 'cause, um, when reading, it's hard to understand, like, um, especially when you're reading something from another part of the world and they're talking about, um, how water is a problem and they're talking about like kids having to walk miles and miles, um, to get water. And, um, in my mind, I'm like, how is that even possible? Like, um, so which paths do they walk? Like, how do the roads look like? How long does it take? But when you watch the videos, you get to see and you're actually, it's real. It's real. And, uh, and when watching the videos, I, I like to put the captions on and Ms. Miranda advises us to do that. Um, so it helps you like, even if you don't understand what they're saying. Sometimes they go too fast and, uh, you can just read as you watch and you can pause from time to time. And the videos are always there too, just like Raskids. You can always go and watch it multiple times. I love all of them, but those are my-
Can you imagine how lucky I am? I get to spend a lot of time all day long with these two. Not bad life. Okay, so yes, we, a wide variety of things here, okay? And then we would like to invite you to come to our classroom. So this is, uh, it's not mandatory, but we're strongly suggesting it. November eighteenth, we're going to open our classroom up for the day. All the students will be with me all day there and we will showcase, but it, not just showcase, it'll be an opportunity for you to actually, uh, visit with us, talk to the students, ask them questions. They'll explain to you a little more what Sara and Becky just did about how these different methods, uh, using the classroom really helped them to prove what they understand. Okay, so we have something for everyone. Uh, Becky and Sara, you want to hand those out? All right?
All right. Cooper didn't bring us anything.
I can help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for our audience, I'll just read, this says, "You are officially invited." The EL history class at GHS would like to invite you to come to our open house on November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, anytime between eight-thirty AM to eleven AM and twelve-forty-five to one-thirty PM. And our classroom B one-forty-two. We would like to have the opportunity for you to meet us and see what we do and how we do it. So please mark your calendars. Thank you, EL history class.
Might be fun to open up that QR code.
They're all different. Nice.
They're all different. That's cool.
They're all different, yes.
Very cool.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right, does anyone have any questions?
Questions from the committee. Amy?
First of all, I just want to say, you ladies are so well-spoken. I'd never know that English was not your first language. You're both beautifully spoken. I can tell you work very hard and that you enjoy the hard work that you're doing with Ms. Miranda. Um, I did have a question about, um, how, and this might be for Lisa, I'm not sure, how do you evaluate students who come here for the first time to see if they need special education services if they're not English speakers? Like, how does that process? I'm, I'm just having trouble wrapping my head around it. It must take hours.
You can come back up if you want.
There, there's an entire process. Um, we need to make sure that if there is a learning disability suspected, that we're testing in their, in their native language.
Right.
And particularly at the high school level, we have a conversation with the student in terms of what are you most comfortable in and with the reading, writing, speaking, listening? But there's a whole process that we have to follow, um, guidelines by the state. And, um, with special education, there's a flow chart and we have to look at, is there interrupted education? Have the students, um, been exposed to enough curriculum here in the United States in order for us to really evaluate their needs as learners? It's very tricky.
So if you have students, if I could follow, Adam, chair, I'm sorry. If, if you have students who come in at, say, fifteen or sixteen, that process can probably take a year to find out what the disability or, or special needs are. How can they possibly graduate on time? Can they get an extension? Is that how that would work?
So particularly, um, Mrs. Miranda, myself, and the guidance department work very closely together. I think it becomes most tricky when we have students from countries that we don't necessarily have prior education background for. And we have to look at life experiences and look at what our graduation requirements are. We reach out to Worcester in particular and other, um, school districts that have larger EL populations to see what they do. But it's ever-evolving and every student is, comes with a different story. So we have to look at every student individually.
I have to say, the number was higher than I expected for the total.
It's growing.
And I, I was just going to say, it's, it's, I knew what the number was three years ago and this is-
Ten years ago, ten years ago, I had one student. And so it's fifteen now. But with the middle school altogether. Eleven, so, right, so altogether, at the beginning of the year, I had twenty-six. And then April stepped in and was able to help a lot. And so I don't, I have fifteen high school and four middle school right now.
And what's interesting is twelve years ago, April was our sole EL teacher for the entire district. And that was my first year here in the district and April was, was it. She went to all six buildings. So it's, it's a growing population, but it's a great population to work with.
So I'm kind of follow up on your assessment question, but I'm going to go a little bit backwards. So I know that you assess children, is probably what you said too. I know you assess children with the WIDA of, for incoming language proficiency. Exactly. Yep.
Yes.
So, um, do you, uh, also assess students, um, in their native language to see how much academic knowledge they come in from with? So hopefully, when you get to questions about eligibility for special education, you can have a baseline of- So hopefully when you get to questions about eligibility for special education, you can have a baseline of where they came from and how much they knew before they started learning English.
I can, I can talk to that, speak to that, I guess. As the teacher, I if the student, for instance, if the student is Spanish speaking, I can speak Spanish to them. And I can start getting a sense right away, right? They have transcripts. I can look at the transcript and see what, where they've been in school. If I don't have the language, I have some other people around that we get to know each other. It's, I'm gonna tell you, it's informal. It's not a an exact science, right? And so we, it takes a while to start to to get to know a new student. It takes a while.
So are you collecting that data so when you get to questions of how much progress they're making? In their English language acquisition and in their academic progress that you can utilize as a baseline of their skills?
I I provide grades in the in power school like every other teacher in the high school. So I have a collection of all the things that we do. And I can, we can just line it up there and show differences in everything from listening, speaking, reading and writing. It's all validated there.
So I'm kinda thinking of lo- those literacy skills, you know, kids come in with a variety of knowledge and some have gone to school, some have gone to no school, have have, some have come with very little schooling. So in thinking of those literacy skills and you know how hard it is to, when you have no when your house is built on a shady foundation and you don't come with a lot of literacy knowledge in your first language, how hard it is to acquire that second language. So that's why my question was, is like, are you collecting some of that data? So if a child three years on the road comes in for uh concerns about their learning, that you can go back and come and say, actually, he came in with nothing and look at the progress that they've made.
So and we do that. I would say we progress monitor all the time. I think Nancy was thinking formally in terms of power school, but.
No, I'm thinking like, I'm I'm even think, not even.
The students themselves reflect also, right? They take, they they understand. The high school kids definitely understand what they don't understand and then they they, you know, they start, all of a sudden it starts to click.
But then to answer your question, even at the younger grades, where where at the high school, we have the luxury of having that conversation with the student. At the younger grades, we have it with the the parents as well as the students. But then um they're constantly checking for understanding and collecting data and um just like we do with all of our students between um DIBELS and F and P and you know, informal testing and collection of data. And we will go to a student support team meeting. And the EL teacher will come with their portfolio of work that the student is doing with them in their classroom. And then say it's a a fourth grader and the fourth grade teacher will come with their information. And collectively, we look at what it is that the student is doing. Where were they, you know, in second grade? We do have the luxury, because we have such a small group of teachers, that, I mean, April probably could tell you where most of or many of Nancy's students were back when they were in second or third grade or fourth grade. Um, and we're constantly having those dialogues as well. So I'm not sure if we answered your question specifically, but.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Any other questions from the committee?
I had one question about progress monitoring. I'll look at you. For the students who leave the support, sorry. What does that look like? Is it something the students are aware is happening or is it kind of on the down-low secret, checking in with their teachers? Is that kind of what happens?
So at the younger grades, um what happens is Lisa has now taken over. I I think Le- I think um I'm thankful for Lisa every day, um but Lisa has taken over, reaching out to the classroom teachers. And it's a formal progress monitoring, how are students doing? And it's all of the the character traits too of a student, you know, their homework. Are they asking questions? Are they speaking and listening in in class? Um, are they struggling with comprehension? Plus our our typical benchmarking that we do. So that's done formally with the classroom teachers. And then Nancy checks in with her students several times a day, um even after they've she's set them free um from her classroom. They still will often come during extended block and and come down and see her or lunch. Or they just drop in to say hello.
When they're in college.
Yes, and also when they they come back from college.
Saying if they don't come, you find them.
Oh, yeah, I, you get concerned then, right?
Right.
It's like, they need to come in and check in.
Getting at is making sure that we're not losing students who've who've completed the program successfully and I'm sure it's easier in the high school, cause you're there.
Our graduation rate, I was trying to figure it out before I came this evening. Uh, it's got to be ninety-five. Oh, it's way up. It's real high. I've had in ten years, one one student, two students left the district. Those that stayed all graduated from high school.
And many have gone on to four-year universities.
Oh, they're in four-year schools now. There's some that are mastered. There's two that are in medical school. So it's exciting.
So you're staying forever, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
You and Lisa are staying forever.
Oh, Lord.
Thank you so much for your, for all your good work. We really, I personally, I really appreciated learning about this because I I knew we had some supports, but I wasn't educated on the degree and the and the the breadth. Um, so I really, I really appreciated this. It was so lovely to meet you ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to put in a uh, I don't know, a pitch to go to the open house if you can. One of my best times ever on the school committee. I had the privilege of going to have lunch years ago uh with uh Dr. Cummings and this current, not the current students. Um, and we just had a wonderful time getting to know each other and being in the class. And I think what maybe, I think comes across when Becky and Sa- Sarah? Sarah speak, um is the community that comes from it. Which to me, I mean, I know we look at data and graduation and all of that. Uh, but to me, school is way more than grades and data and education and you can tell the community you have together and um I think it just kind of exudes from all of you. So I'm looking forward to the eighteenth and.
Okay, we'll open it up for lunch. Come by, uh, open those hours up.
It may have been the only time I've ever seen him eat.
He did, that's right.
I feel like he might have had it.
We had pizza, right?
We had pizza. Yeah, it was delicious. No, but.
You can do that, we'll, okay.
You don't have to have lunch. That was not my intention.
I feel, I felt sort of funny about shutting off the time there.
I thought maybe it was time to give everybody a break and to to reassess. So don't promise lunch.
No, we can sit and eat together. What's nicer than that?
It was just, it was nice. It was not the eating, but the the being together was the best part. So I'm excited to do it again.
I, and if those, if that date doesn't work at all, let me know. Right? You're always invited, is what I'm saying.
We weren't even on an official, it wasn't an official date. We just got to come. I don't know.
I don't even think you told me you were coming.
I don't know how I even got to come. I just was lucky.
It was lunch, so someone must have known.
Jay went, but he must have just, I don't know why, how I got the invite.
I think the other thing too, I'd just like to recognize Nancy and her students for inviting the um adult learners in our community and across the world into our classroom on Tuesday evenings.
Wednesdays, this year, yes.
And it's very exciting because you've got not only Grafton community members, but really members across the the world that join you.
Sarah's father joins in sometimes, her cousin from Cairo, they come in live. Uh, we have a uh young executive in Brazil. Uh, we had lost him for a year, I guess. He showed up last week. It was exciting. So yes, we have people not just in the, in the Grafton community as such, but we uh, everybody's invited to join us.
It's very helpful. Like when my dad um joined, he actually joined for like a multiple times. He was like, so when's our next meeting? I was like, it's next week. Like, don't be in rush, it's next week.
And it's midnight there.
It is.
When he's joins us.
Yeah, it's like one AM or twelve. But it's very helpful, it's so fun. It's not just like very strict about English. We, we have some fun. We discuss about like our own lives and it's fun. It's really fun. It's very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Miranda.
Um, it's not really a question, it's just saying that like I myself moved here when I was five years old from Egypt. Like I know Sarah from theater and all that, but um English wasn't my first language at the time and I was in ELL from kindergarten to third grade. My sisters were eight years old when we moved here. The other was eleven, twelve years old and honestly, like, I don't have, like, English is just like like I speak Arabic a lot and English is mainly my main language now. But without those ELL classes, I wouldn't be where I am. Like we had ELL classes also offered to my parents and they speak English really well for their own, in their daily lives and their jobs and just like I'm sure you understand the impact you make on the students' lives, but I don't think you'll ever completely see like how big of an impact, like I would not be able to communicate or speak, make as many friends as I have, like participate, be here without the ELL teachers I had. And I wasn't even in Grafton at the time, I was in Westboro, but like it's still like everywhere you go, just the idea that there's such a big effort and thought process. And seeing like the background work that you guys even do is just so amazing. So thank you for that, just from like someone who isn't in it now, but like has been, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. The um online last week, I asked the question uh to the adults, why are you? Why are you in here? Why are you taking this? And I thought it was gonna be like, oh, job interviews. Go to parent-teacher conferences. No, the one lady looked up and she said, no, she said, I need friends. Yeah, she said that and I was like, oh, oh my. Yeah, she said she needed to make friends here in Grafton. So thank you.
Well, I know she will. Thank you, Ms. Miranda.
Thank you.
Becky and Sarah and Lisa, thank you. Thank you very much for all you do and for coming here tonight to speak to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's make some new friends.
I know.
Will she walk at seven o'clock in the morning, seven thirty?
Alright, um next on our agenda, we have the MASC resolutions. So these are, these are um in everyone's packets. These are the resolutions that get presented on, they'll be presented on Wednesday, the day of the MASC conference. I, as the delegate, will go and vote on um how we want to vote. Um, and we'll decide that tonight, whether we want to support these resolutions or not. Um, in the past, the school committee has voted to support all of them. Sometimes we've voted to support most of them. So um we can, um, you know, it's a decision that the committee needs to make whether or not um we will do that. And um I guess I'll let Laura explain a little bit more about what these resolutions mean and what we do.
Thanks, Liz. So um for everybody's just knowledge, so we're a part of MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um, and part of what they do besides train and knowledge is it's an advocacy group. Um, in fact, uh question one was uh resolution my first year on this committee. So this also talks about how long it takes to get some of these, but this was something that uh MASC advocated for eight years ago with the, you know, so-called millionaire tax to fund public education and other things. Um, sometimes they fall in the mud. They, you never hear of them again. So it's not, we're voting for these and that means it's going to pass. It gives um MASC what where they're going to, um the leadership team, what they're going to advocate for. Um, they have a resolutions committee. The people on that committee, I know all of them well. They are great, uh smart people. Um, and they take resolutions from all sorts of committees like uh resolution one, which is something we talked about earlier. It's, I'm so proud to see our name up here. I know um Liz is uh they're meeting later to talk about how to advocate for this. Um, I would assume that um we would support that. Um, so I think, and I think we've gotten in the really weeds sometimes. I wouldn't recommend we do that. I think if we agree with the overall spirit of it, um of course, I can't tell you how to vote. Um, and then Liz will just, and then sometimes on the floor, they make resolutions and then I think we talked about this when we nominated, Liz will use her best judgment. Um, but yeah, so Liz, I don't know how you wanna do this. My recommendation might be that we just, if anybody needs one further explained, um I wasn't on the committee, so I'll do my best. I think they're worded okay, but I feel like sometimes, you know, just like questions are a little confusing. Um, but I would say if you have an issue on one of the resolutions, maybe we talk it through rather than going resolution by resolution just for time's sake, but.
Yeah, I think, and you know, it depends on whoever wants to make the motion can make it however they want, but if I would it'd be nice if we can vote for them all as a package and um vote one way or the other. But if anyone wants one pulled out and they'd like to, you know, make a motion to, that we um vote to support one through five, you know, so be it. So it's kind of, it's it's up to whoever wants to make the motion and and what the rest of the committee wants to um support. So kind of up to us, so I'll open it up. We, I can entertain a motion now or we can talk about it a little bit before pre-motion. There's always room for discussion in the motion too. Laura?
I just wanted to, resolution number two, I'm pretty passionate about that. We do have, for those that don't know, we do have a special education reserve fund in Grafton. Um, and I think this is a really uh additional, it's a small, I think we have a hundred K in or two fifty. That's a big difference, I can't remember. But it's not enough. If something happened, it would drain our fund pretty quickly. Um, anyway.
Yeah, the cap, the cap is two fifty. I don't know what we have in it, but.
I feel like I can't remember, which is ridiculous. So long.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to support all five resolutions. Are there six? I amend my motion to say six resolutions.
That's why I paused, so that I wanted to make sure that I was right.
It's cause one of them doesn't apply to us. I forgot about six.
The one on the last page, yeah.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Amy?
I just wanted to say, if people wanna discuss something, let let's absolutely do it. I don't want anybody to feel like I'm railroading, but I I also feel very strongly that if we're gonna talk about something, we need to have a motion first. So that's just my personal, my personal thing. I mean, I I personally support all six of these resolutions, but we can certainly talk about any concerns or questions.
Pause for a minute, no? Alright.
Love it.
Fine, win all six, so alright. Alright, in that case, all those in favor? Five, it's unanimous, five. Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Laura. Um, alright, we are, uh because Dr. Cummings isn't here tonight, we're skipping the preliminary fiscal year twenty-four budget discussion. We will uh try that again next, next time on the uh eighth. Um, so then that moves us to future agenda and schedule planning. Um, I will not be here next meeting, so Amy has taken up her role as vice chair and will run that meeting. Um.
I'm not gonna call in zirk.
Yes, I will be in zirk. Uh, I will be, let's see, it's Tuesday. Yeah, that'll be, that's, that'll be quite late for me. I'm already doing uh parent-teacher conferences from from Switzerland. Um, that was a challenge in itself to try to get those scheduled. I had to be the very first person cause I needed those times and I had three kids and I need those times in the afternoon, cause there's only two hours. When everything's remote and I had to squeeze in all the kids and you can't schedule, sorry, I'm going off, but you can't schedule times back to back, so they make you skip, so I'm like, okay.
I thought I had it rough, having to leave elections, run across the parking lot to the high school, have my five conferences and run back. And then come to the meeting at seven. I only had one thing on the schedule and that was, there's, uh, it's just a typo. I don't know what happened, but it's on the second page, it says student faculty council meeting.
What day?
Uh, on the seventh.
Okay.
It just, it should be advisory, I think something just got copied and pasted wrong and it's
Oh, yeah.
Last meetings are the same there.
Yeah, it's a global change. It's, it's right on the thirteenth. I'm gonna just need to fix that going forward. Okay, good. Laura, did you have something? No?
No.
Okay. Alright, so we'll just move the budget update. If we move the budget update to next meeting. Is that still, it's not too packed of a agenda.
I'm always a hot mess on election night, so.
It is election night too, so.
That is right. We'll see. I've been through many, many.
I. We need you.
Yeah, usually on my couch.
Well, the returns, the returns come in at eight. If we move quickly, we can.
I'm just saying, I'm usually a hot mess.
Oh, yeah.
I am now.
Bouncing around.
So it'll be good that we're getting a well-being update.
I don't think the equity inclusion audit update is gonna be terribly long.
Probably not.
Whole lot to report there.
Right.
And the preliminary budget, this, I've already seen the slides and there's not a whole lot there either, so.
But will they have the returns on like Buffalo Wild Wings on all the TVs so we can go watch them?
Do they do that, Laura?
No, they don't.
Buffalo Wild Wings?
I was just kidding.
I don't know. I usually go home.
To open a bar that's like, you know, politics bar with.
I have one in Worcester. That's, I, no, I like to go home and sit on my couch with, yeah, I don't even wanna talk about it.
Ben and Jerry's?
It's not appropriate.
All right. Well, wish you a safe trip.
Thank you, thank you. Um.
Just hold my, you guys are gonna have to hold my hand. Amy, you'll be next to me. I just need somebody to hold my hand the whole time.
You can text me. I'll probably.
I will endeavor to end the meeting by eight o'clock.
I probably will be asleep, but you can text me.
I'm on.
All right, moving on, moving on. Approval minutes. Um, we don't have the October eleventh meeting minutes, so we'll have to make sure we also um I'll put those on the agenda that I'll prepare and I'll share with you, Amy, ahead of the meeting um next time. We'll move those to the next. And, but we do, did have the policy subcommittee minutes. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes from October fourth. Anyone here would like to? I saw a hand up first. Can I, Laura?
Madam Chair, I uh would like to make a motion to approve the policy subcommittee meeting minutes from October fourth, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor? Five, unanimous. Thank you. All right, um, yeah, thank you, Kristen, for preparing that. Um, next we have the, the warrant. Um, I get a motion to approve the October twentieth, twenty twenty-two warrant in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion about the warrant? See none? All those in favor? Five, unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Next we move to policy. Um, we had four policies tonight, um all of which were presented, are presented tonight as a second reading. So you've seen all of them, just as we normally do when we present things that we've made edits to or presented them for the first time, as in the case of uh policy FFA. We present them once to the committee and then a second time um in final form, hopefully for approval. And those are all in your packet. Do you have any questions? So I can, I can entertain a motion to approve one, some, all of those. Or we can. I will answer questions before I motion, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to approve policy FBB enrollment projections, policy FF naming buildings, fields or rooms after individuals, policy FFA memorials, and policy FJR guidelines for renovations, improvements to schools or school sites, all as a second reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And just for clarification, FJR is now becoming FJ as per our, no, 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 it's just for for notes and minutes as per our.
Yep.
That's the, one of the changes that we're making. All right, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, see none? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, thank you very much. All right, any member reports tonight? Yes, Laura?
Um, I know we all went to Oktoberfest, so that was exciting to see everybody's, but my um, I'm very pleased to announce that I got re-nominated um to serve as Secretary Treasurer for Division Four. That'll get voted on at MASC, but they only submit this late at one, so hopefully um I will get re-elected. So it's kind of exciting that we had our meeting. That's it.
So that, that will be one of the things that I'll vote for as well, or is that a separate?
Do not know who votes on.
Part of that.
I think the MA, I think Division Four meet, every division meets, so we all have a meeting. I don't know when it is. It's usually, I don't know when it is to find out, uh Wednesday or Thursday, and then we'll vote there. Last time I did it, it was during COVID, so I've never been through, it was like all virtual, so I have no idea. But I mean, they're, we're all running unopposed, so somebody would have to really want it and do a coup.
Yeah, I was just curious because I didn't, I didn't see it on.
Yeah, it should have, it's not the rub.
Schedule of things that we were voting on to Wednesday, so I didn't know when that happened.
You vote, you vote on your officers for next year, which has been submitted as the, but that's usually also set because people just move up and uh.
Yeah. Not a lot of.
It's exciting. Stacy's gonna be a good leader, so.
Good. All right, any other member reports? Rochelle, do you have anything to report?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, we had homecoming a few weeks ago. It was really fun. The dance went great. The competitions were great. Seniors won, yay, as always. Um, the NS, the N H, NHS applications were due around a month ago, almost a few weeks ago, something like that. And the results are actually being sent out. Apparently this today. I thought they were being sent out later this week, but today. So congratulations to everyone who got in. Um, we have a chorus costume concert this Thursday. It's chorus band and jazz band. And it's Thursday at seven. It's really not long. It's like an hour. Each um section performs like a piece or two. And we get to dress up in fun little costumes in celebration for Halloween. Also, um, there's a fundraiser this Saturday that I invite everyone to come to, please. It is held by NHS and Best Buddies. It's called Trunk or Treat. It's an annual thing. It's from ten to one. And we have a bunch of volunteers that are decorating the trunks of their cars and they're handed um little baggies. Like the people that come and they can, you know, trick or treat from trunks, get a little bit of candy. And, and it's really just a fundraiser too. So please come. Sorry?
Where's that?
It's at the high school. Sorry, it's at the high school. It's being held by NHS and Best Buddies, so it's a really great thing.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a little plug myself for um we, the class of twenty twenty-four also has a fundraiser on November fifth. It's um a vendor and craft fair at the high school from ten to two. We have forty, over forty vendors this year. We're using the gym, so we've, it's grown a lot. Um, we'll have food trucks and we'll have raffles. And it's gonna be a great time. So I hope everybody comes out and supports the class of twenty twenty-four. Um, Kathleen Shaker has organized this for the class and um, and I'm helping out with it, so um it's been a lot of fun. We're excited about that event, so.
I'll be driving home from the Cape to go to the vendor, I'll be going right to the vendor fair.
Yeah. I think I'm coming back and forth a couple times that week. I I'm gonna be doing a lot of driving.
Yeah, I don't know. She's like, when can you come? I'm like, I don't know when I'm leaving the conference. Like, if I'm just gonna leave Friday night.
Yeah.
Saturday?
I'm gonna leave a little early to put tape down. We have to tape off all the Friday nights, so.
I just get, it's, it's exhausting.
It's gonna be a long couple of weeks, yeah. All right, anything else from members? All right, we don't have correspondence to speak of. We don't need executive session, or do we? Anyone need executive session? All right, um then I'll entertain a motion to our, to adjourn. Anyone like to? Or we can stay.
It's early.
Did you move?
She, yes, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? See none? All those in favor? Unanimous.